At 6:30, we'll call the Freetown Medical Regional School Committee to order. Will we get a roll call?
Steve Owen.
Here.
Jeanne Fox.
Here.
Jerry Bar.
Here.
Jennifer Blom.
Here.
Ron Clark.
Yes.
Laura Ransdine.
Here.
Will Segway.
Here.
Steve Sylvia.
Here.
Alright, anybody else recording the meeting outside of Lakeville? No? A little quick welcome after a bunch of remote meetings. They have a little bit of normalcy back to our meetings in person. We would generally be in the library, but they're undergoing some renovation and construction right now, so why we're here in the auditorium. Anybody here for public participation? Seeing none. We'll move on to item four, the Agenda Acceptance of Minutes, June 24th. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, but Mr. Segway, is all, any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion passes again.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, could I ask the members of the school committee to pull the mic close to them that's in front of them? Very close. The P.A. system is working. Point it at yourself, please. Thank you.
Alright, item number five, Subcommittee Reorganization. We have a number of subcommittees that we have to outline the membership to. Like going conversation that some that would like to change. On the warrant side, I encourage Mr. Clark and Ms. Ransdine, are we okay keeping the same membership?
Yes.
We'll outline them and then we'll take a vote to accept them and anybody's meeting to that. Policy Subcommittee is currently Ms. Barron is chair with Steve Owen, Laura Ransdine, and Steve Sylvia.
I would like to resign from this committee. I have been on it for five years now. It was suggested when I first became a totally new person that I get on this committee because I learned a lot and I have earned a tremendous amount. I've been chair for last year and it has gone to someone else now.
Mr. Sylvia, is there any interest in staying on?
Yes.
Yes, I'm staying.
I, as well, will be stepping down from the Policy Subcommittee, so we're looking for another committee member to step up for that committee.
Mr. Owen, I'll sum up if I'm alright.
Thank you, Mr. Segway.
Just though I just want to add, not to discourage you, but as the chair you are, and in fact, for a member of each of the committees.
Yes, I had to stand out. Spoiling my parade. Collective Bargain currently chaired by Mr. Segway. Membership by, by some, and Ms. Fox. All parties interested in staying on? Okay. Superintendent Valuation Committee chaired by Ms. Fox with Mr. Clark, Mr. Segway, and Mr. Sylvia. Everybody interested in staying on?
Yes.
Yep?
Yes.
Regional Finance Subcommittee. I need another volunteer. This has to be, this is the one that is stipulating the regional agreement.
That has to be free time.
That is a member from Freetown and a member from Lakeville.
Yeah, I'll step up. The problem with them is that sometimes the timing is bad, but we can always play with that.
Right.
Alright.
Delegate to the M.A.C. Member Conference. Mr. Clark, you're currently assigned.
There is no funds this year.
What's that, sir?
There is no funds.
Done, so can we leave it as is?
Yeah, he did great on that roll.
Palted a delegate, Ms. Barron, you're all right.
I'm all for it this year.
District Wellness Committee, Ms. Barron.
I'll stay on that.
And Legislative Liaison. Besides everybody, but.
Yes.
Okay. Alright. Ms. Blum, I do think the Policy Committee would be a good one to start to sit in. But I think if you take a poll of which Subcommittee to help on to, maybe that's something you can look into and jump on board at any point there, so. I did not make the vote, but I figured she would let us know which Subcommittee to do that. So I wanted to leave it up to her, which ones that she want to comfortable stepping forward on. So I thought that was a good one, to your point. New members get to know, being an act of.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept the Subcommittee membership.
As you revise to this summer.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion passes. You made it. One other thing related to the Subcommittee. In conversation with Ms. Fox, we feel that a new Subcommittee should be put together for this year. And for lack of a better description, it's the Succession Planning Subcommittee. This is to focus on, at some point, the Superintendent. We need to backfill that position. But what are the characteristics we're looking for in that? Where, so we would like to, one, of the vote to establish that committee, the Subcommittee. It will be in one-year term, not permanent Subcommittee at one time. Looking at the role, the position. Now, the task for this particular committee is going to be in the exit interview of our Director of Finance. So that will have an immediate aspect of that.
Yes, my ma'am, I just want to clarify the community that although you're discussing that, my timeframe does not.
No, you're not.
Not imminent, yes, no. But it is something that we have to plan for. And I'm not opposed to the committee, I just want it to, we're talking multi-year.
Yep.
Right, right. It's just so that we aren't left in a lark, so we have a plan.
Yep.
I just want, I don't want the headline to read from the community that.
Good point.
No pressure.
That this reopening is having a stressful piece on it, so this is not a year committee.
So, part of that recommendation with Ms. Fox's conversation, we feel that there are two members on this committee that actually do very well with that, with being Mr. Sylvia and then Mr. Segway. So part of the establishing the committee recommend that we open up to those as being the membership of that and look to their advice as far as expanding the membership either to other district members, expert in the field, what have you. But again, this is just more of a temporary one-year Subcommittee. Succession planning with one of the immediate tasks is the exit interview of our Director of Finance.
So I'm all for, obviously, getting our ducks in a row for the eventual retirement of our Superintendent, but I think there's a little concern sitting here that we're always talking about succession when, as Ms. Madeira said, he still has a couple of years to go. So I just don't know what message this Subcommittee is sending. I'm certainly open to listening to what the deliverables would be coming out of the Subcommittee. I'm certainly willing to be a part of it with Steve Sylvia, but I don't necessarily think this is needed as of right now. Maybe I'm wrong, but I think we still have a Superintendent for how many more years?
Two.
Two, right? So I think we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves, but absolutely, I'm willing to, I'm willing, I mean, I'm willing to listen, I'm willing to be a part of any committee, and certainly willing to listen, so.
So, if I could, Mr. Segway. I actually think that it's perfect timing. And the reason for that is rather than getting behind it when you have to make plans out of the fact you want to be in front of it. And it involves not just the Superintendent, it's looking at our whole structure at the highest administrative levels to make sure going forward we're doing the right things. We've changed, the district's changing. We thought that we'd put two people, this is a thought, and it's really, you guys have the expertise, but just thinking, trying to be proactive in a big picture way. That's all it is. It's not to say Mr. Madeira's got killed by the pandemic. That's not it at all. It's trying to be proactive and in front of it.
Yeah, I'd like, I'm willing to sit on any committee at any time, so certainly up for whatever this entails. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark.
What would you do at this time? What would this committee do?
Well, you're gonna start with Ms. Loakes. Then you're gonna look at how are we structured? Do we have everybody where we want them once we lose this leadership in a couple of years?
How am I saying that?
Well, we can potentially look at all leadership where it's going to be in a couple of years. It may not be structured the way we want, we have it right now. We have a certain type of leader who's been phenomenal in getting out in the public and doing all these things and keeping his administrative team in sync. But we need to be thinking a little bit more creatively going forward. If you get somebody else in there with different strengths, is that gonna work in our environment? Do we have an assistant Superintendent somewhere? You know, how are we looking at everything? That's the goal. And I think it starts with brainstorming.
Is it? That's quite a job description. I'm quite agree with Will. I mean, that's a job description that you put together when you're going out to look for a Superintendent. I don't see what that committee is gonna do two years before our current Superintendent retires. I just don't see the function.
Well, again, it's a one-year tenure, correct, as we're discussing? So that would be one year in advance. That's all it is, and it gives us time to think about how the structure should be.
And we need to start the process of looking at, not today before he retired, so we have plus than two years to do that. So this is an opportunity, so we're establishing subcommittees to look into that. It allows us to at least to get our ducks in a row as we go forward. This is not, we're not saying we gotta have it done in two months. This is a couple of different meetings, couple of different thought processes to have that discussion.
And we've had this a little bit in the past until we lost some other key people. Is this how we want it to be? I remember Dr. Correa, for example, is this how we want that to be? These discussions have come up in the past. It just allows us to get a little bit in front of it. It isn't just one person, it's really, it's an overview. And it did this at another, in another organization, and it was really a productive exercise.
Mr. Sylvia.
Yep, thank you, I think for thinking of, I'd be happy to serve. I think it's a proactive approach. You know, and I think we could spend at least the first year figuring out what to do in the long term. And I'd be happy to be part of those discussions, beginning with an exit interview with our business director. So happy to join the group.
Any other questions or concerns? I'll entertain a motion to establish the Succession Planning Subcommittee with Mr. Sylvia and Mr. Segway as the initial members.
So who?
I have a motion, but a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention?
Stand.
Mr. Clark abstaining. The motion passes. Moving on to Old Business FY20 Budget Update.
Okay, so in your packet you have an update for FY20, it's the same one that we packed around the school year. We are in the process of closing FY20, so the next meeting I should be able to give you a better update of where we stand for E and D rolling into the fall. This will be important information for you as you start planning if there's potential state gain cuts. We don't know that yet, and I can talk about that in FY21's update.
Any questions, Ms. Loakes, on FY20? Seeing none, moving on to 6D FY21 Budget Update.
For FY20, I provided you the assessment sheet. There have been no changes to our voted budget. I will keep you updated as I hear from the state hasn't told us yet what our aim is going to be and if there are going to be any cuts. I have included in that package what the state had presented before in the governor's budget. It is hopefully a conservative number, but we're not sure to date. That being said, throughout the close of 20, as I just mentioned, we should have enough E and D to cover any shortfalls. We also have a revolving account such as Circuit Breaker and School Choice that can offset any cuts the state in.
Any questions on FY21? Mr. Sylvia.
Sorry, but is this actually with the state quite a timeline or are they just still in deliberations?
Still in deliberations. It's actually been fairly quiet on that front because of all the grants that have been rolling out. The state and also all the business managers have been busy going over that information, and we have the focused on chapter 70 right now.
Maybe it's in the timeline, it's green, it could be impacted, we don't. Maybe there's a whole other Subcommittee that was maybe on the.
Has there been more information I'll put right into the committee, though? Whether it's in the next school committee or I'll send it out to you all if I get anything in the interim.
Thank you.
As Ashley mentioned, something that Sylvia recognized is fortunately for our district, we're in much better shape than a lot of districts that are headed with lines on that topic. Not that we're not impacted, but certainly some of the decisions that we made this spring in relation to savings and the E and D and some grants allowed us to be in a better shape with voting. Our meeting with the Commissioner today reinforced what Ashley said, no indication of the timeline being on those most months.
A lot of the information at the beginning was anywhere from a 10% to 20% cut. I do believe with the savings we had in FY20 that it should be able to be covered going into 21. That being said, 21 might be the easiest year in the years to come, 22 and 23 might be worse, but we'll just have to work with that at the end there. Thank you.
At our next meeting, Ashley, can you, if we assume a 20% cut, can you just outline where those funds would come out of, where they're currently sitting?
Sure.
That'll give a good picture for the committee as far as what that would be like.
I know.
Thank you.
6C, E.S.Y. Summer Program.
It's actually, was in a report, Miss Don, if I may, I just want to simply indicate that we have 82 students in district that enrolled in the remote learning summer program. So that is, that program typically is on 40 or 50 students, but obviously that's a site-based instruction where we're doing solely remote. We are pleased that those students are receiving those services. In addition, we're working closely, I think maybe more than ever, at least in my tenure with CPAC, as it relates to providing services for students. They just recently came out of the survey that we facilitated and made sure it got out to all families in the news as well. I think we had 166 responses, so the summer program is fully remote. I should note, and I'll bring this up a little bit later on, it is our certainly intent that we provide onsite instruction for those sub-separate students in special education programs, regardless of that model we adopted and went forward. But 82 students in the summer program, we go back for the old business item. Thank you.
The only thing I would like is that the next meeting, we talked about the last one, there apparently would be a savings from our summer program. I just want to make sure that we can use any of those savings towards the current year deficit of the special ed programs.
And you're referencing the idea that we do not need as many staff members.
Exactly. Absolutely.
Any questions on the E.S.Y. Summer Program? Seeing none, 6D, Reopening Free-Lake Task Force.
Thank you, Miss Don, just making sure this clicker, this works more specifically for the audience, but certainly I know it's a little challenging for the members. So I don't know if you want to come out, you see, there's turn to your seat. This was the survey, it is in summary form in relation to the reopening. It's something that we shared with the task force on Monday. I think what's important to note as I kind of walk through, we'll do the survey results at first, I'll go through the community survey. We had a great response that we received from the family community survey. 1,332 responses, this is the breakdown by school, as you can see. We have approximately 2,800 students in total. So when you consider that we sent the survey out on Wednesday and had a deadline on Monday, four days, 1,300 responses. Here's the breakdown by grade. We asked to identify any grade that there, that, because we could have obviously a family where they have children in multiple grades. You see that indicated here? Can you see the percentages per grade? Extremely significant in the questionnaire, we asked, do you feel comfortable with your children returning to school? The response that you see there, and if you kind of tally them up, I'll break them down, the neutral obviously would be in the low point. Almost a 50-50 breakdown, right, relative to, you take the two categories of very uncomfortable or somewhat uncomfortable, the bottom two, and you get just over 50%. And then when collectively look at very comfortable, somewhat comfortable, and neutral, again, I'm making an assumption, you can categorize that they did not feel they were uncomfortable with the return to school, you would classify the other 50%. Again, if you just took somewhat comfortable, very comfortable, it's a little skewed there percentage-wise, right? It's more like a 50-40 as it relates to families feeling uncomfortable or comfortable returning in September. Now again, this is predicated on still not knowing at the time when they responded to the survey what model and what it would look like. Part of returning to school in person, instruction would require you to wear a face covering. Do you anticipate any issues with your child being able to comply? The vast majority said no. The vast majority that said yes, 33% were primarily elementary, it's not shown here, which makes sense. In our guidance today with the Commissioner and with the medical experts, they are again strongly recommending grades two on up, but they're also strongly encouraging and recommending and saying that local districts can take action to strongly recommend masks in K1 as well. Can't require, but they simply indicated that obviously more universally face mask on one at any grade level and certainly these adults included. But there's the breakdown, vast majority of families, when I say vast, 66.0, 66%, over 67, indicated they did not feel that it would be an issue. I'd like to think it's a result of them doing it in their homes and everywhere else this day and age in relation to kind of where we're at. Even what we know tonight about COVID-19, if you could choose, would you prefer? So these are the three models that we'll be submitting July 31st as a district. You see the breakdown there, 45% even with three-foot distancing, right? The three feet compared to six feet is noted there. Didn't have all the information relative to the model. Although we did present a little bit of information, the task force said it was 45%. And then you have the other, you have the hybrid model, which is 50% of our students go one week onsite, and then those, you have the A group and then B group the following week. See that number is 34.3. And then almost 21% of our families indicated that they would prefer a full remote learning model to start the school year. And that's how the question was raised, given what they know today. If schools reopen, blow apart time is for you, be able to transport your child. Obviously, transportation's a huge item. Transportation guidance is coming out tonight. What I can tell you in the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education guidance, it appears that the numbers, the general premise to it is masks must be worn in the buses, windows must be opened, must be appropriate spacing with one child per bench or seat, which for our buses would mean 24 students. They do permit siblings in the same family to sit together. So you could potentially have 25 or 26 students. Our average bus rider percentage, and we're doing those numbers right now, is about 50, just to give you a little indication. If you look at the percentages of what families responded to this survey if school reopens, my child will take the bus, 31% indicated strongly they would ride the bus transportation. I will transport my child into the car, walking, 37%. It's about 1/3, 1/3, 1/3 here, right, going through. And then you have not sure, 32%, 31%. Probably could have one more category, right, if truth be told for all of us, which is right now, I'm probably gonna do this, but that could change as we become more comfortable in relation to kind of feeling that it's safe. But under the category, it's not surprising when you consider the vast majority of kids that are transported by the families on the other basis in both our communities anyways to see these numbers. Yes?
And any of the guidance on, in comment, whether particularly required or not, I think that was.
Good question. Again, we haven't seen the guidance, because we haven't been provided that, it's coming out tonight. We, the Commissioner shared a couple of slides, overviews. I'm guessing there's some detail in relation to plan weather and the fact that you can't do that in certain conditions, winter time, weather, you know, storms. But that was the slide that we saw to date. I will say, everything the state has provided, once it has identified, has been detailed. Protocols, for example, which on the sixth, so I'm expecting there to be response to that specifically. Before it starts to start the year with distance learning, what types of support most needed? I'm trying to capture the big picture items to this. I think what's unknown here is the two big categories, right? The two 30% categories are in relation to helping them, assistance with academics, right? You see the purple, they're learning new content, it's distance learning, helping families with that. And then the other large category, almost 31%, 30.4, assistance with student engagement, academics. Certainly those other categories exist, technology and so forth, but I think, I think that was the greatest challenge. And I think even more so, if you look at those percentages and drill down, and I have the opportunity, you see at the elementary level even more emphasis with families feeling a need to help there, which is not common, that it's not maybe as self-directed because of the age of children. A real challenge in remote learning. Before it starts to start the year with distance learning, we required the device. 76% of the family said no, right? And then you have 25%, so a quarter of our kids. So I think what's great for us to note is we put in place last year a process where we didn't actually give access. We're in the process of securing one-to-one for six to 12. We've put a grant in for four to 12. We are handbook in place that you're gonna see shortly in detail that outlines all the protocols and procedures and expectations and would be a great county resource guide relative to the Chromebooks coming out. But that just simply indicates the number and the need as it relates to what families will in fact need the technology. It also addresses, we're addressing it through some grants, hotspots, and indication of internet access for some families, even though it's a limited number. And we have some information on that in relation to making sure families can, can make sure that they have the essential internet connection at their home and line of device. So that was the end of the community survey, and I did share with the school committee, they have seen all the responses, because there were many responses, detailed, heartfelt in relation to the circumstances. Staff, we just did one, one question with responses, and the association, their deadline is tomorrow, sent out six more questions. I'm not sure I shared that, she had the questions with you, but I'll have those results by the end of the week. Association's working cooperatively with administration. Want some more follow-up to this question? A question that opposed to the employees, to staff specifically. If the building's reopened, the full, what message describes our current feel about returning? What I think I want to note, I don't want that to minimize the fact that there are certainly percentages of employees who fail, that they're either at high risk or have childcare issues or are nervous. The vast majority of our employees, 96%, if you count the breakdown, indicated that in fact can return to work. If you look at the 44.4, they can return to work if they're nervous, that's what I'm saying. Very realistic, right? And then you have the next category, 34.2. I can return to work and I'm confident that school will take care, take every safety precaution necessary. Large percentage. And then you have the 17.3 percentage, I can return to work, but would prefer to work remotely. And then you have some smaller percentages that fell into the category, they're either high-risk, have childcare, and or likely to retire or resign, very small numbers. But again, some numbers there to consider as we move forward and we roll out what in fact model we have. So in summary, what I wanted to, want to share with the task force, which I will do Monday, we wanted to be sure we, and I can let the members go back to their seat if you prefer. This survey, the survey results in fact need to be made available to the community. Obviously, they're not to the task force tonight, I want the school committee to see that, sharing is on the task force, I see one task force member present. You will receive the summary. School committee has already seen all the responses, I don't know if there are questions specific. I think what I'd like to point out is the accelerated nature and the significance of what the state is asking us to do. So they're asking us to submit a preliminary district reopening plan by next Friday, July thirty-first, and I intend to do that and identify in each instance, what model, what the model will look like, and how you're going to be able to attain full instruction, hybrid, and/or remote.
Within that July thirty-first plan, I just want to read the questions because I think it's important for you to note because you'll be taking action ultimately on the model that's chosen. The questions read as follows. What are the key findings from the in-person feasibility study? For our district, I'll capture them, space is not as much of an issue as it is for other districts, right? We have the space able to, within three feet, to address all of our students, but we also can make some accommodations for six. The second question, which reopening model within your plan are you leaning towards for the start of school? In-person, full, hybrid, or remote? So they're asking with a very short description, they actually list the total words, it's a paragraph or two. Identify where you're leaning towards before your August tenth deadline, final deadline. Under the in-person, they're asking you to provide a summary of your plan, how students will return to full-time, in-person learning. The hybrid, same thing. Identify or summarize your plan, how students will return to school through a hybrid learning model, provide a summary of your plan for remote learning as the default model of instruction for all students. I'm reading the language directly from the state. And then lastly, please provide a summary of how students with disabilities, English learners, and those disadvantaged students will be supported within each of the models. So certainly those opportunity gaps for those children as it relates. I've had a couple of offline questions from board members, and I'd be happy to answer them online as to, kind of looking as a preview as to what that plan would look like. I would have said probably, and did say to some of you and to the community, and I said this to the task force two months ago, that I felt we could accommodate full instruction of our students. As we're getting more and more guidance in relation to safety and health, as we're getting transportation guidelines and facilities and operations, it's becoming clear that we in fact, one, will submit a full instruction model, but it will contain some real limitations. It will be challenging to transport all our students under the guidance that's coming out tonight, for one. Two, if we are truly going to stick to the model of six feet, attaining six feet as an option, we clearly can't do that with the space we have. We'd have to do that within three. So I just wanted to capture briefly, the in-person instruction model has some limitations for this district. And where I probably was two months ago thinking that would be the primary, I'm probably like eighty-nine percent of the state. I was at a session yesterday with the business managers, facilitated by business managers in the state, joined by superintendents. Eighty-nine percent of my colleagues said that they in fact, most likely would start the year off in some sort of hybrid model. Our hybrid model that will be presented next Friday to the state in that initial plan will be a one week on, one week off, as I presented to the task force. It will include probably some modifications to the start of our school year. For example, we're hopeful that we can add some additional professional development last week in August, push back the start to right after Labor Day, those are decisions you make as a calendar, and potentially have group A, our first group, go to school on Tuesday and Wednesday, group B go to school on Thursday and Friday, and then start the process of the one week on, one week off in kind of a four-day transition. We're supposed to be getting some more guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education relative to the number of school days that are required. Right now, it's a hundred and eighty. We understand there might be some flexibility there, where you can build in some time in the initial weeks to be sure your staff is available. But hi, our hybrid model, just to be clear for this district, is a one week on, one week off. I know there's a lot of variations of that, those students would go. All of our special education students that are in sub-separate programs would go both times, they would be part of both cohorts. And we'd have to make some accommodations through the alphabet relative to families. We are looking at kind of an A to L, M to Z, but we need to kind of have that to be a flexible discretionary piece in relation to families, one, that don't have the same last name, for obvious reasons, right? To be sure that we make sure those kids are captured and together, in addition to the fact that it may be adjusted slightly depending upon the, the grade level, right, school, what school they're at, whether it be the intermediate school, middle school, high school. Again, all of the principals are submitting three models. And then lastly, remote, which is, as the state called it, the default model, which is students remain home and engaged. We have spent, I would say, an equal amount of time on all three models, to be quite candid, right? We spent some time, so for those people that are assuming remote simply means what it looks like what we did in the spring. The state's been very clear, and thankfully, we were very clear. It's going to involve much more grading and assessment and accountability as it relates, in addition to the fact that we've, for example, brought technology more forefront, more into the forefront professional development as it relates. At this point, considering that that timeline is next Friday, my indications are leaning towards, in my answer to that question, where are we probably heading to start the school year? We are most likely strongly considering some sort of hybrid model as it relates to the start of the school year for our students. I would say it appears to be based on the data that's coming in for Free Town in Lakeville to be the safest approach for our students and staff. I would have to obviously meet with the association. The school committee would actually have to take a formal vote before August tenth as to accepting of the model. It will have an impact. I hinted a little bit about the calendar, and want to show you what that looks like on paper. But considering how huge a topic of conversation this is relative to transportation, keep in mind, some major items haven't even come out publicly. Transportation guidance, tonight. Facilities and operations, tonight. So I don't even have those documents. We've been working off what we project would be the case, which is challenging, and so it's a fluid, it's a fluid piece. So the drafts, each of the principals and their teams, their COVID teams have submitted their three models, and then together, I'll submit something for the district. It doesn't get into all the detail, and a lot of the questions are thinking about that initial plan, but the turnaround from July thirty-first to August tenth in your final plan doesn't leave you much time. So as they're submitting their drafts, it is with the recognition that we have to have this all lined up. The directors, whether it be the director of finance with facilities, director of curriculum instruction, a director of student services, director of technology, are working closely with leadership team. We had almost what, two-hour meeting today in this room, just discussing kind of where we're at and what things we need to do. I feel very confident that we can provide a model that's safe to see our kids. Ideally, and it's the mission of the task force, is to see all our students return to school onsite, right? I mean, there's no replacing that piece. We can do a better job, and we will do a better job if remote learning is what ends up happening, and it potentially could as the, as the numbers change. But I will share with you, I'll kind of paraphrase what the commissioner said to all the superintendents today in an hour conference call. All New England schools, all New England states are sending their kids back, and our numbers are probably better than all of those states combined, Massachusetts. There's no excuse not to safely make efforts in guidance to get our kids back into school. He did not say, and I'm not being quoted, that this is the perfect model. I think, like all of us, we would like to see all of our kids return. I don't think, when you think of the complexity of twenty-eight hundred students, and, and five schools, and staff and adults, and the timeframe we have, that it's realistic to expect that we can do that. I just gave you the bus example earlier, which is if the guidance says twenty-four students can ride a bus, and we have all fifty, and we have fifty students on our buses, even with families committing and transportation issues, and you're dealing with reduced cafeteria size and numbers, it's going to be a challenge. But I could tell you, because I see it every day through the principals and through the teams, we're going to develop something on the thirty-first that's going to be submitted initially, and really something you're going to have to act on because the school committees, as I found out, as we found out today, are expected, which we knew, to take a vote and adopt and/or accept the model that's being presented by the superintendent. But my understanding initially was it was going to be after the August tenth deadline, and we have a school committee meeting on the twelfth. They're now talking about a timeframe of adopting and voting prior to August tenth. And I think part of their rationale, it's not a criticism, part of their rationale is to give families and community as much time as possible to prepare, in addition to the schools themselves to prepare for that piece. So we'll be setting up our schools, and we're in the process, and your director of finance asked the question today of me on behalf of the facilities, how are we setting up our classrooms? We're setting them up three feet apart. So the pictures that I shared with you on the task force that you saw, you will see twenty desks, with the understanding that only half of those desks in each of the schools will be filled. In some ways, if you think about it, if it's every other row, several rows, you can identify those children, and so when they come, they'll use that. So even from a cleaning perspective, health perspective, it gives some artificial boundaries as it relates to traffic flow and routines. There's not much that we haven't been thinking about these days. I can honestly say, thirty-one years in education, like so many administrators and educators, this is, this has been a challenge as it relates to that. And yet, I will say, at least I, I'm hearing, aside from the politics nationally and publicly, locally, and I say locally for the state, we appear to be coming together in relation to a comfort level as it, what are the expectations? When I tell you that eighty-nine percent of administrators are saying this is how they think they can safely return to school to start the school year, and you're hearing hybrid, that tells me that we're going to cautiously incrementally walk this through. Ideally, what I'd love to see is a successful return with half of our students on some sort of rotation, and then we can slowly phase the rest of our students back in and get some sense of normalcy. There's no way to predict when that timeframe will be, and we also have to be prepared for the latter. I give the state commissioner, governor, a ton of information. I will say, as late as today, it's going to be left on the local level as far as the decision-making relative to the model. We do not anticipate the governor dictating, or the commissioner dictating, one specific, one-size-fits-all model as it relates to the needs of what's out in Western Mass and the urban schools and so forth. And in some ways, I think we should appreciate the fact that that's being allowed, because it allows us to use our strengths and address our needs. So I apologize for taking a little bit more time, but I'm not sure there's any topic that's more pertinent on everyone's minds at this time. I'd be happy to answer specific questions.
Mr. Maderas, just on the staff survey, just to confirm, that went to all unions and non-union personnel?
Yeah, it was an email sent out to all. Correct, correct. And we actually, and we asked them to identify their school and name, so we actually can, we have that breakdown, and I obviously want to share that out publicly. And the association, when I say the association, that is coming from the teachers association when I reference the follow-up, not specifically those other groups.
Any questions?
I do have one. I am very grateful, I know there's been an awful lot of activity, and this has been a very different time for us. I would just want us to be erring on the side of caution and able to be fluid because all models are showing another uptick in the fall, which is why the bus windows are supposed to be open and all that stuff. So we may find that, that no matter how cautious we are, and clearly that's been very carefully pondered and will continue to be, we're going to need to exercise a fair amount of flexibility with respect to how our numbers look as we enter the cold months, that's all. I'm very concerned about that, the surge, and I don't want the surge to begin in our classrooms. That's all.
It is, and I'm not putting on new pressure, but it is ultimately, this committee's looking at, once you have an opportunity to see that initial plan, take formal action so we can then begin to roll.
Oh, no, we, I think we all agree, we want to see these kids in school, particularly, they need it, it's a social emotional piece, I think we all agree, but our vigilance cannot be let down for one second, that's all.
For those of you that, and I know Sherry has seen it, she's on the task force, I can share with the other school committee members, if you saw the protocol in relation to cases and what the expectations are for administrators and teachers and educators, I know we have some here sitting on the board, it's got branson, the expectation in fact, and it should be, but in detail, they planned to thought that out, and we certainly aren't going to be immune to that, we're going to be exposed to that, have to address that in all of our schools.
Mr. Stinkway? Thank you. Mr. Maderas, thank you so much for all the work and the presentation. I just have a couple of quick, quick questions, and maybe this was a task force question. Was there any thought or discussion around providing a fully remote option for the parents and students that might not be comfortable to bring their students back in September outside of the, the plans that were discussed previously?
So obviously that, we'd be speaking to primarily all of our students coming back with a hybrid, meaning there'd be a remote option built into those models, because the remote, obviously, all our kids would be. The state is providing a platform, they have yet to accept that platform, where in fact, if family, they choose to not send their child, if your model that you voted on is either all students must attend school and/or at the other week. So I'm not dancing around the question, it's a great question, but there in fact may be families and/or students that if the model was hybrid, don't want to return to school in either option. So that is not built into the hybrid piece, those families would have an option, one, of homeschooling, obviously, they've always had that option. Two, the state is providing a platform, and we don't have the platform yet, they haven't adopted it yet, that we could roll out, that's, that's family, student-generated, to address the standards, much more comprehensive than simply a, just a, you know, a small program. But we have not built in staffing needs, Will, to answer your question, to address a population of kids who will not return in A or B cohorts.
Okay, thank you. I mean, just a follow-up to that, and again, I don't know the answer. Let's just say, let's pull a number out of a hat, right? Twenty-five students don't feel comfortable coming back in September in that hybrid model, right? Would that have a negative impact on our, on our budget at some point? If tho, if those children decide to be homeschooled?
Yeah, so potentially, potentially, regardless of the number. And I don't think that's an unreasonable number that you just put out there, I know you just, you know, hypothetically looked at.
Okay, so I guess what I would urge, or maybe just encourage, or to research, is trying to see if maybe we could offer something in district for maybe those parents and students that wanted a fully remote option that weren't comfortable. I agree with Gene wholeheartedly that we want our kids in the building. I mean, I think, I think it's key, I think that's ultimately what we're trying to get to, but also, I mean, we know that parents are going to have trepidation, right? And my second piece is just, I hope, and I, and I know this is already happening, that we're looking at professional development for staff, given the survey results with thirty percent of parents worried about the engagement of our kids at home, and the other thirty percent really worried about that new content piece. Hopefully, we're just addressing that with, with staff at some point this summer prior to things getting forward, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's going to have, Will, to your point, it's going to have to be a significant, regardless of the model, in relation to professional development as it relates to the use of technology, but also delivery of standards. Keep in mind, everything just shut down in March, right? We didn't really have an opportunity. We now have had multiple months to look at it, and we may be looking at a year of teaching and learning. So I can tell you the state is, and we will have to absolutely increase professional development in those areas to meet those needs.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Silvier, then Mr. Clark.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Maderas, for your leadership, and thanks for the task force for the time and working on this, and especially thank you for emphasizing safety as we look at the reopening. Just, I may be asking Will's question in a different way, but it's my understanding in a hybrid model, there is a remote component to the hybrid model, which is in effect different than the remote option. You say the state is going to offer a platform, but they don't provide the staffing, because... So based on, on the survey results, there's about twenty percent of our families would opt for that all remote version. Could that be potentially not have anything to do with the Free Lake District? Or will that be a, a remote model that we staff, different than the hybrid model? Because I can't picture a scenario where a teacher has in-person for half the class, and then turns around at the end of the day and does a remote option for, for the kids that are home.
Well, no, our hybrid models are, Steve, though, to your point, if you have twenty students in your class, we are going to have to address the needs of both, both those groups, the group that's home and the group that's in front of you.
Correct.
And provide instruction features to those kids. I think the uniqueness that Will's question asked, that I think you're asking, is that family or kid that chooses to not attend school on either week, and how do we meet their needs?
Correct. So there's two models, you'll get the full remote model that the district will offer on some level, plus the hybrid that has a remote component to it.
Well, yes, though, and that, but that remote model, that full remote, if we have a percentage of students, can't be, from a staffing perspective, that that teacher teaches... can't be from a staffing perspective that that teacher teaches cohort that's home, the cohort that comes, and then a third group that doesn't come at all, fully remote. There will have to be additional staffing and our needs and our state-driven programs that are focused for that.
Great. So, I mean, it's in the feasibility, but if the committee's going to approve a plan on the details of that plan, obviously we'll have to come on a quick timeline.
Yes. Yeah, no, no, it's a, I was going to say it's a ridiculous timeline, a couple of better phrases than that, but it is. It's an accelerated timeline in relation to what the expectations are to meet the needs. I do think as the bottle comes out though, Stephen, to Will and to the, I do think as more detail is shared, and I'll give you a anecdotal conversation, I have a staff member who had anxiety today relative to their children coming to school. When they heard where, peers were going and it's not full instruction and there's more space built in and all the safeguards and the protocols, I don't, I'm not so sure it'll be 20%. I think it'll be a much smaller number when they hear everything that's in place in relation to that and the need to have children at some capacity come to school. But we're going to have to address the needs of those kids that don't.
Mr. Clark.
Yeah. I forget which epidemiologist said the knowledge of COVID is evolving still. And for example, now we're talking about aerosol type of spreading. So that's just one example. Six feet of social distancing versus three feet of desks apart. No matter what model you use, if a child is going back to school, we really don't know what's going to happen. So in a sense, it's an experiment, in my view. And we're going to see what happens. What's the feasibility of not sending them back at first and seeing what happens in all these other districts that do send them back? And seeing what happens then and make a decision based on what happens in other districts that do send this child back, whether it's a half split or full time.
But if I, sort of, I, so just in response to that, I would say it's beyond an experiment, though, right? I think there's significant medical professionals and health professionals that feel it is in our best interest and the interest of families and kids to get them back in some capacity for a multitude of reasons. And so this idea that it's a trial and we should see, I think we are never going to reduce the risk to zero, right? I think that's absolutely truthful. There's going to be a risk involved in engagement relative to kids coming back, but I think that there's significant safeguards and guidelines that we can minimize it to the extent that we feel it's safe. At the end of the day, each community will have that determination, though, to say, you know what, we don't, we don't feel that that's the case. I'll offer my recommendation, I hinted at what that is at this point. I do think there's some real, some real risks in having all of our students remain home for an extended period of time in a remote learning model. I think there's some real significant issues relative to social, emotional issues and health issues. I don't want to marginalize the fact that in fact we could run into those circumstances, but I think we all have safeguards and protocols in place.
Just to make myself clear, I'm not suggesting that for the whole year you do that. I'm suggesting that, I don't know, six weeks, eight weeks, you look at what happens. And then if nothing happens, yuck, then you go ahead and send them.
But when you say look at what happens, look at elsewhere, look at what other communities are happening?
Yes, yeah.
I mean, I just, again, having a conversation with the Board of Selectmen is yesterday. When you look at the number of cases in our two towns right now, one Board of Selectmen member said to me, there's zero cases. That was the evidence. So I just, I would be, I would be careful about us being, judging a decision and being safe based on what's happening elsewhere unless they have the same safeguards that we were willing to put in place. But I hear you. I do hear it's a priority. My administrator said to me today, I had a principal text me after my other meeting today thanking me because they knew my initial plan was to bring everybody back. Still would be my primary goal, but I think the safeguards aren't there.
Ms. Barron.
In regards to what you were saying, Mr. Clark, I felt the same way a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago, and I've spent a lot of time at night researching what other countries are doing. To tell you the truth, I'm kind of aghast because we are the only country in the world that I can find, certainly I haven't looked at all of them, there's hundreds of them, that have had children out of school for the length of time that we have. It'll be six months now by the time they get back. Some countries never close at all, we never lost a day of school. Other countries shut down a school, but not the entire district if the school became infected. They shut down the school for two weeks and so forth, but nobody has been out of school that I can find for more than eight weeks and we're on six months. So I feel as though when you look at the rest of the country, we've kind of, this is not an experiment to me. The other thing that I want to say is that, you know, the United States really is the medical mecca of the world. So we have, we have, as Rick said, we have the American Pediatric Association that is saying we are doing far more damage by having kids sit home in front of screens, video games, television, as well as their schoolwork. Their physical, their physical health is suffering, obesity is on the way up, their emotional health, they need their teachers, they need their teachers' relationships. So I was where you were a few weeks ago, but I would like to see everybody go back, quite frankly. The busing situation, in my estimation, is what has put this on hold for us.
Can I respond? I agree that emotionally, the social need, and again, I'm not advocating that the child stay home the entire year. I'm just saying that look and see what happens. Like the beaches in Florida or the bars in Texas, they opened early, you saw what happened, now we're pulling back because of the results of what happened. That's all I'm saying. I'm not advocating for the, for an entire year for, to hold a child out of school.
Mr. Stinkler.
Yeah, and not to beat a dead horse, but I just do think there are going to be some families that are hesitant to send their kids back in whatever model. So, Mr. Maderas, I would challenge you and your leadership team to try to think of a way, if we can, to be able to keep those students as much of a part of our district as possible and service to them, maybe. I do believe that there is a way to service them on those off weeks, right? Given that the numbers are going to be low with minimal, with minimal kind of issues. So, I mean, I'm just really, I'm worried that we're going to lose students from the district ultimately.
So, Mr. Maderas, part of your plan is, I think everyone has a different definition of what hybrid is. So part of your proposal is to, what does that hybrid model truly mean to us here in the district, right?
Correct.
Especially from a curriculum perspective, so that way, that's clear to the full community. So I'm assuming your proposal will include that.
There is detail for that as well.
Great. Will, your proposal also, how we open up schools for the extracurricular activities?
Yeah, so I haven't, so again, we're waiting on guidance on athletics and chorus and band and some of those other activities. We were told that they'll be in early August. Interestingly, you'll have already submitted your initial plans, have taken action on them and then have formal plans, but it is, obviously, if you didn't see the most recent news, I shared some of the MIA piece, they've pushed out the start of the fall athletic season until September 14. Many colleges and universities have already, you know, moved all of their fall sports. No determination, but yes, we'll have to include all those activities as well.
Including foreign act?
Correct. And so, actually, great, great point. So within the, within the hybrid model and full instruction model, we are building in a model to address before and after care for those students who are on site. So there is an expectation, I'll just hint at a little bit of what Lisa Patrico's working on. It is to keep the kids in the before-after-care program at their existing site. So in other words, you don't bus them as we currently do to the campus, so the ASWAM sick kids would potentially have an opportunity to receive before-after-care program at the school. And at each of the schools, we're looking to do that for those students who are in session that week. If it's all the kids, then it will be all the kids potentially. If it's a hybrid model, it'll be for those kids who are currently in school that week. It's pretty unique, it's challenging, right? You're trying to work out schedules around that. You're avoiding the transportation piece, but you also have to provide staffing and protocols in place at each of the schools. But it is, it will be built in as, in the final plan as to how you're addressing the needs.
And each of those plans will have a protocol in case there's a case that's identified within that.
Yeah, the state, so Sheri's on the task force, the state pretty much has given a prescriptive plan as to what that is and you really, there won't be much deviation. It was about a 20-page document, it's very clear. Parents and the community, I've shared it with task force, it was an impressive document. It's detailed and in some instances cumbersome as it relates, but it outlines in step by step what schools and school districts will need to do to reopen safely and address just what you said.
Any other questions for Mr. Maderas? Mr. Sylvia?
Just a comment, and I don't want to get bogged on, on the details of a remote plan, but, you know, given, and to Will's point, I would like to see a plan presented with some detailed structure, keeping it at the Free Lake level. Also reading the response protocols that were put out by the state, if there is exposure, which at this point sadly is probably inevitable, students will be asked to go home for up to 14 days or 11 days depending on testing. So it would be ideal if there was a robust remote option for these students to participate in at the local level.
I mean, the challenge is going to be for those, for the districts to do that is the staffing and the consistency there. I'm not suggesting it's not necessary and something we'll have to take a look at because I do think we will have families that have done that.
Ms. Barron.
Just a quick one. When will we need, when will you have a deadline for parents to decide whether or not they're going to be part of the hybrid every other week or full remote, which is a different platform?
Yep, so we're still waiting for some guidance from the state as to what our expectations are. Once the model is voted on and approved, obviously the community will know, in fact, they'll find out what cohort they're in. It will then be up to districts to solicit input. There's some question relative to the responsibilities of the school district and parents, for those parents who potentially opt out. If you think about it, in theory, I understand we're in a pandemic, the option for students who chose, choose not to come to school and school is a requirement, and super tenants, I can tell you, are pushing back with the commissioner here in relation to what are the resources that we have, which is we recognize families are anxious. But at the same token, what are their responsibilities right now for a school district when all students return to school? They have a homeschooling option, we certainly have medical issues where we tutor and provide education, but we don't have a robust side group waiting there to teach a cohort of students and families that choose to stay home. That's the challenge and that's, I'm being perfectly candid in relation to that piece. And it will be a challenge in a hybrid to create a scenario where you have 20 students in your class, we identify those kids, you teach 10, I'm just using our numbers, 10 at home, 10 at school, and you flip that number, but of that 20, you also have three who choose to stay out both weeks. Again, we may be looking at more of a remote model if in fact the numbers dictate that. I can tell you that some of my colleagues are suggesting that that's the case, that if in fact districts and expectations are, this is what we'll need, we'll need X number of teachers, we'll need X number of resources. The state knows that and has tried to provide a platform that will address the needs of those families moving forward. That's sure, certainly what I can share with you, there'll be some more detail to follow, but that's a whole nother layer and challenge.
Any other questions?
Just one other question on the slides, that you had mentioned the comfort level with the masks, was primarily elementary school, was that, was it, if you queried it out, was the responses on returning back to school or not returning back to school, was it higher at the elementary level?
I don't recall the breakdown, Steve, exactly. I'm not so sure it was dramatically different.
Okay.
Honestly, there. I'd have to go back and take a look.
All right, thanks.
Going on to new business, MASC COVID-19 Finance Resolution.
So I'm not sure, so the resolution was presented last time through and the state school committees were simply looking for a resolution. I don't know if it's in your packet here tonight. I see the resolution for, the authorizing resolution actually that you're addressing relative to business. I don't see the MASC COVID-19 Finance Resolution, which was a resolution that this board would take if I had to parent phrase to support appropriate funding to meet all of the needs of the pandemic as it relates to instruction. So it would be my recommendation, short of that document, that this board would in fact endorse and support the MASC COVID-19 Resolution as presented at our last meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion passes unanimous. 7B Lions Club donation.
Stone, my recommendation is to accept a donation from the Lakeville Lions Club presented by Gordon Goodfellow of $500 to the district to support our food service program specifically as it relates to the pandemic and the breakfast lunch program to help ease those costs.
Move to approve.
I have a motion, do a second.
Second.
Yep, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
We're going to send it back.
Aye.
Yeah.
Any opposed? Motion is unanimous?
Stone, if I just may simply add, for those of you, and I know Gene and some Freetown people have been made available, for anyone in the community who doesn't think that it's a valuable resource to provide donations, we just had a, another United Way Market pickup in Freetown that it was, they were overwhelmed by the impact of the number of community members that came out. It certainly shows our need and so we're thankful for the food service, we're certainly thankful of the Lions and on behalf of the school committee, I will, I'll be sure that the Lions Club receives your recognition and support of this.
Good. 7C Form of Authorization Resolution, vote required.
So I just wanted to give a brief update on performance contracting as a whole. We've gone through majority of the paperwork at this point. We're waiting to close with Bank of America for our financing. So the first page is just an overview of all the steps we've taken to date. With the audit, we had 13 projects that came about for the campus and we're moving ahead with all of those. I included a chart so you could kind of see it in a different visual than I presented before. You can see the total cost is $5.9 million. We're going to finance with Bank of America for 18 years. The rate is going to be 2.394 and over the course of 18 years, the district will be saving $1.3 million of energy cost. So that is over and above what we're paying back of that $6 million, which is a great, great option for the district. On the second page of the report, I need, I'm asking for two votes tonight. The first is the Form of the Authorizing Resolution. This is so we can enter into the contract with Bank of America, we can start the process of actually getting the construction done and the leasing of the equipment. I've included Exhibit C1, that's the entire resolution. I just need the chair to read the section that's on the vote, a resolution of the governing body. You just have to read that and vote on that part.
Okay. Vote to Form an Authorization Resolution, a resolution of the governing body of the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District authorizing the execution and delivery of equipment lease/purchase agreement with respect to the acquisition, financing and leasing of certain equipment for the public benefit within the terms provided herein, authorizing the execution and delivery of documents required in connection therewith and authorizing the taking of all of the actions necessary to the consummation of the transaction contemplated by this resolution.
Move to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. One concern that I have with both of these resolutions, typically with the signing authority over a certain amount, there is a dual signature within the district. I know one of them requires a signature of the secretary of the committee. I would like to see dual signatures of the administration on this.
Sure.
I think that's, especially with the monetary figure that we're talking about, especially with the transition up to, right, over the lifetime of this, I'd like to see two signatures required by, of the EDC in order to execute on this.
No problem. I agree. And we can put into place, just as you do with the warrant, you see everything that's signed, so it will also come across during the school committee meetings every month. This is really just so we're not kind of stopped with being able This is really just so we're not kind of stopped with being able to proceed with the project, just a formality.
Got it. So I have a motion and a second, any other questions? Does this require a roll call vote? Nope. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstention? The only other request that I would have is, since this is the required signature by the secretary of the committee, which is currently in the room, if you can just designate some time with her just to make sure she doesn't have any questions as far as what she's signing, I know we've gone over performance contracting a lot before she came on board. So definitely use her as a resource for any questions around that, but your signature would be required on that document.
So before the meeting, we had a very high-level brief conversation about what the document was and what it related to before we went through this process.
Excellent.
So we've touched base.
Second vote is assigning authority to authorize the following, to sign on behalf of the district as it relates to the performance contracting, A, the superintendent of schools, B, the director of finance, C, the director of facility. Please note, this may include but not limited to the signing purchase orders, change forms, and all other documents related to performance contracting. The only thing that I would add is the requirement that two of the three signatures are required for that.
And the reason the vote is at title is just because there is transition already, I'll be leaving, so whoever's the director of finance will be able to assume that signing authority.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion is unanimous.
Thank you.
7D, an executive session tonight, we had a conversation about the merit increase for the superintendent, Mr. Maderas. The vote moved to public session, which is now, I'll entertain a motion to, for the merit increase for the superintendent to be included in his base of 2%.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion is unanimous. 8, Report to the Committee. Ms. Loeb.
I don't have anything.
That's not always true.
She covers about four of the agenda, and as we get to her report, it's already been captured. Dr. Kowlinski is here.
Hi, so the first article on my report, the ESSA grant, is also known as the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, CARES Act. I submitted a grant application on July 6th for that, and it was for $253,607. Of that, $39,474 will be encumbered for students and teachers that are in private schools. As part of continuing reporting on remote learning that occurred in the spring, I had asked the schools for social emotional support, and what they did. So, so what you have here is listed by school, the kind of social and emotional support that they provided to students and to their families. That's also ongoing, and then in the fall, when we return, the, the school counselors and, and social workers will also be providing professional development on a building basis for staff and for students, and then also still provide support to families. So that'll be rolled out individually on a school-by-school basis by the school counselors. And then in response to the anti-racism resolution that was passed by this body on June 24th, we created a curriculum and instructional guideline for staff to follow as we return to school, so that they can create instructional opportunities for the students of Freetown-Lakeville School District. So they include the social justice standards, materials and resources, learning plan templates, textbooks that will assist with addressing the components of the anti-racism resolution that was passed here. Any other questions for me?
Any questions for Dr. Kowlinski? Thank you for the social emotional support. I, I am concerned that we still have a large contingent of those that were not verbal but are still struggling. So I guess I would have a question about what are you doing about those students as we go back to school? There's a large number of students that did not participate in the spring, but there wasn't an outreach to them piece. If people ask for help, I think we gave it to them, but how do I identify those students that are not raising their hands? Teachers do a great job when they're in the classroom, they can see these signs, but in a remote environment, the non-verbal pieces that if they're not maintaining where they usually are academically, if they're not participating, maybe that's part of the plan coming forth as far as what that, because that's going to be a big issue, the social emotional support going forward.
You're right, it is. And even previously, the teachers were aware of who was re, who was participating and who wasn't. We tracked that as a school. Those families were reached out to, first by the teacher to see what was going on, how can we help, and then by the counselor and the principal. There were some instances where the principals actually went to homes to see how we could support. So we, we tracked participation rates every week, and the principals reported that data to me and kept that data. So we do know who participated and who didn't, and certainly those will be the first families that we reach out to, especially once we can see them face-to-face, to find out, okay, how can we support you now? And in a hybrid model, if you're not participating remotely, we're going to see you again next week, and we'll be able to touch base then, and, and I think have a better handle on how to support families and the students.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, Ms. Barron.
I don't know that this can be done or not, but I feel as though we have a vocabulary situation here, and listening to you, the hybrid model, those are remotely, that, I, I fear that's going to tell the public that remotely is those children who have opted out altogether. And actually, what you're saying is we be students. We almost need to define this some other way, because I think it's very confusing.
I, I mean, I think you will see a little more detail in the plan, and you're absolutely right.
We need a new name word. We need a new name for the one that, what did you say?
I think the, the top term is distant learning.
Right. Maybe it's distant learning, so that we know that remote is partially hybrid.
Right, and we can certainly provide definitions. Part of what we're doing too is expanding that remote learning tab that had been created on the district website, and now actually working with some assistant principals to create a website dedicated to distance learning and, and different aspects of that, and, and resources for teachers, like a repository of resources and materials, not only for teachers but also built in for parents. So we can certainly create definitions, and this is what we mean by, and, and clear up any confusion that's out in the community, and use that website for that reason.
Thank you.
Mr. Owen, if I may, thank you, Pat. I, I just again want to drive home my insistence that whatever model we choose, our primary focus is getting these kids back into school. And so when we have all those students, and I'm not ignoring the fact that they'll be a population, but part of my task in the next six weeks, five weeks, is to convince families and parents that it is in the best interest of their children to return under the model that's adopted by the school committee. And if you look at our general homeschooling numbers, they're very low. They're not 20%, they're not 15%. They can't judge their remote learning or distance learning based on what they experienced in springtime. So again, I recognize, I'm not going to say that we should ignore that, but the primary focus of the hybrid model is to bring all our kids back, but do it in a safe way, and educate them, and that's going to continue to be, and we'll take a look at what percentage we need to do that, and certainly Pat will work with the principals as it relates. I don't want to distract from the fact that the cohort will, will provide an opportunity for some remote learning at home, but also onsite instruction, which is going to be critical.
Director Student Services update.
So I highlight, on behalf of Ms. Curlin, I did recognize that 82 students are in our E S Y program, that we do have a plan for reentry for students with the new guidance for the fall. There's a component specific for all the models, and I referenced the sub-separate groups specifically, but certainly the students, all students that are on individual I E Ps. And lastly, I, I'm excited by the, I think the renewed charge of the new executive board for CPAC, and certainly Mrs. Fox and Mr. Sylvia's involvement, and I think they could speak to that. I think we have, in a couple of attempts, all remote, we've, we've built some bridges with them to work together moving forward relative to professional development, some things and resources that we can provide for them. In the last couple of conversations that I've had, and I know the, the school committee members have had, I think has been very supportive, supportive moving forward, they, they have scheduled meetings for the upcoming calendar year. The first meeting is October 6th, but we're already trying to do something with them in August to provide some in-service for, for parents. Thank you.
That survey was, they're, really good responses on the survey, really good.
Yeah, so, so they've tried that in the past, just to highlight that, and to give Ms. Curlin and the Special Education Department, but it had been facilitated through our office. We have access to all those families, we can get it out, and we can do that. It was asked by CPAC, would we be willing to do that? We didn't edit their survey, we accepted their survey as presented, and I think overall, they were very pleased with obviously that response because we were able to facilitate that, and so, and show district, district endorsement of the concept, right? Their voices are being heard, and that information we'll share. I think the executive board is hoping to schedule something with us in the next couple of weeks to kind of give some feedback on the initial survey. Thanks.
Item number nine, Subcommittee Updates. I don't think there's going to be much. The only thing that I would like to ask is related to the superintendent evaluation and goals. If we can establish a timeline, so that way we can really push forward to get that done in a timely manner this year in support of a superintendent, so if we can just have a rough timeline associated with that.
Yeah, I'll have a chat with Mr. Maderas and figure out what, what that is and share with the rest of the Subcommittee. You good? All right.
Anything else that may properly come before the meeting?
Mr. Owen, if I may, just simply just before adjournment, don't try to get in the middle of that, on the way of that, too much, but I just want to highlight a couple of the upcoming dates of significance and maybe offer a suggestion or for discussion. So the first is that we have a task force meeting, our fourth meeting, Public Task Force, we have at least a couple of members here tonight, and that will be Monday night here in the auditorium. Mrs. Barron continues to represent the school committee. What I've tried to do is provide them the same transparency that I do you folks, so as I get guidance from the state, I share it with that group. We're meeting at 6:30 here in the auditorium, and Lake Ham has been very cooperative in working with us to get that message out. What I would like to add is we've added a school committee meeting for next Wednesday night for the sole purpose of director of finance interviews, starting at 5 o'clock. We've posted that meeting. We have a 5 o'clock, a 6 o'clock, and a 7 o'clock, we have three candidates. You should have a packet of information for those that were not on the screening committee at your place as it relates, and if you need some additional information. Chair, Mr. Owen, has asked me to also provide maybe a template as it relates to questions, so you have an idea as we've kind of walked through a script as to what we can do moving forward. We can have some discussion right prior to that first session. But the point I want to, and then we have.
Just related to that, Mr. Maderas, I'm very much a proponent of opening up to any questions, rated to the realm of that, but at least you'll have what the questions that were asked as part of the screening interview. We have 45 minutes per candidate. Mr. Maderas, the only thing I'd like to request is the layout. We can try and make it on a level playing field instead of us going down with the candidates? I don't know if that's even feasible, but just something to think about, so that way we're at least on one level having a discussion instead of we're looking like.
Yeah, we had planned to have it in here, and just for, you know, logistics, and we were in the caf, I would say the cafeteria, but you all felt that temperature, so.
If it's not feasible, totally understand, but just something to think about if it's a different realm, just not to put them on the hot seat right off the bat, but it's just.
Yeah, all right, I'll see if we can make, see if we can somehow figure out what the best strategy is for that. I would like to add a couple of, one date that's not here, senior, we have a senior night, a senior banquet in the sense that has been rescheduled to the Tuesday night, and it's for students only, facilitated by the high school administration next Tuesday with a tent outside behind the high school, all the students are invited, so they're pretty excited about that, because it kicks off the start of their graduation week, and we have a traditional graduation outside. And I may add, that has already been endorsed by the Board of Health in Lakeville, in Freetown, the Board of Health Nurse, both fire and police are aware of it, we've worked out all the logistics, I know it doesn't come shocking to any of you that any attention to detail given by the high school administration, Dr. Starkey, we're in good shape, we expect a decent turnout, that's a 10 o'clock graduation. We do have very limited space as it relates to socially distancing, the kids are going to be in, in the stands, but if there is a representative that would like to come, if you can let me know, so I can let Dr. Starkey know. We really limited even administration, and some of the routines, we're not handing out diplomas, there's a lot of safeguards as it relates, but I, I can tell you that the kids are very excited about finally having that opportunity, and we're going to keep our fingers crossed for the weather. But we have both towns fully supportive, and that is on Saturday, August 1st. The last item under dates that I just think this group might want to consider, in light of the fact that the state is considering a formal vote by the school committee on the model presented prior to August 10th, our next school committee meeting is not including the director of finance, August 12th, and so you may want to consider moving to 12th to the 5th. We still have another meeting a couple weeks later, but it would allow you to get that meeting in, I mean, you could simply add another meeting, but then you're meeting back-to-back, sure that's necessary.
Well, it sounds like there's two options, we move the 12th to the 5th, or another suggestion, since it would be one quick agenda item, that on the 5th, we do a quick remote Zoom meeting just to handle the vote of that. I'm open to any suggestion by the full board. Ms. Barron.
You're saying a remote Zoom.
A Zoom.
Just to vote on whether or not, on the.
Correct.
I would much rather do that in public session, physical session.
We would still be public in Zoom, but it'd be, you're saying, physical present?
Physical.
Yep. Any other input from other members?
I was fine with the suggestion that we just do the 5th quickly and have our regular meet, but I'm, I'm flexible.
Any objection of moving the meeting on the 12th to the 5th? Seeing none, we'll reschedule the August 12th Full School Committee to August 5th.
Okay.
Okay. Any other dates? Obviously with the, it's usually great to have a school committee presence at the graduation by giving everything else going on, and there's not going to be any official handouts or anything like that, so if anybody really has the need, they want to be participating in that, they can reach out to Dr. Starkey for that.
Email, text me, you'll let me know before you leave. I'm certainly going to be present, but I'm also trying to be sensitive to families and friends that are trying to take every space available.
That, that was my thought.
And address that, and that's the kind of conversation I have with Dr. Starkey, it's why, in fact, central office administrators who are typically supportive and representative, many of the staff have tacked away from that, so the focus can be on the number of family members that can be there, but certainly I think representation is appropriate, if you want to let me know, I can let Dr. Starkey.
For the committee, everyone has the full packet of the three candidates for next Wednesday, so you should have all that. It is 7:59, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? We are adjourned.